Good evening. My name is Melissa Williams and I serve as the President of the Washington County Board of Education. Welcome to the members of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, staff, and the community to the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting. Everyone is participating in this meeting using a telephone or an electronic device. It has always been the practice of the Washington County Board of Education to meet in person and to invite members of the public to the Board's meetings. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain legal directives, and the need to safeguard the health of our community, it is necessary to participate in this public meeting by phone or an electronic device. Today's business meeting will be recorded and the public may access the public meeting now on Channel 99, Facebook, and on WCPS's website. The public comment portion of the meeting will not take place. The Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us. This information will be distributed to Board members and the Superintendent. At this time, I call to order this public business meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. Dr. Pew, would you please call the roll so that we may determine if we have a quorum of Board members present?
Mr. Bigford? Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Here.
Mr. Stauffer?
Here.
And Mrs. Williams?
Here. Dr. Pew, would you try Mrs. Fisher again, please?
Yes, Mrs. Fisher?
I'm here. I was unmuted before.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. We have six Board members present and therefore we do have a quorum of Board members present. At this time, I'm calling on Board Member Jacqueline Fisher to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and the pledge will be followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. At this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
That Mr. Ridenhour?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Ridenhour's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Dr. Pew, would you call the roll for the approval of the agenda vote?
Mr. Bigford?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Stauffer?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
And Mr. Bakum?
Thank you. I have six affirmative votes for approval of the agenda with the student member concurring, so we do have an approved agenda. At this time, we'll move to approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
President Williams, this is Mrs. Murray. I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, July 14, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Mr. Bigford?
Mrs. Fisher, second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. So we have a motion and a second on the closed session minutes dated July 14. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Dr. Pew, would you please call for the vote? Or call the roll for the vote, excuse me.
Mr. Bigford?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Stauffer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Williams?
We have six affirmative votes, so the minutes of the closed session of July 14 stand approved.
Mrs. Williams, this is Mrs. Murray again. I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, July 14, 2020.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Mrs. Fisher, seconds.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Dr. Pew, would you please call the roll for the votes?
Mr. Bigford?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bakum?
Aye.
And Mr. Stauffer?
I have five affirmative votes.
My, my, it will stay unmuted. It keeps mutes itself.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. I have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring. We have approval of the business meeting minutes dated July 14, 2020. This is the portion of the meeting where we usually have public comment. That public comment portion will not be taking place this evening. However, the Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing It's at this time that Board members usually have a response time to any public comment, and this evening, I would like to acknowledge that since its last business meeting two weeks ago, the Board has received nearly 200 emails, several phone calls, and letters from parents, teachers, and members of the community. On behalf of my fellow Board members, I thank all those who took the time to share with us their personal experiences, their personal circumstances, their opinions, concerns, and suggestions. Colleagues, do any of you have a comment that you would like to make?
Mrs. Williams, this is Mrs. Murray. I'd like to make a comment.
Yes, Mrs. Murray.
I have read every email and letter that has been sent and understand the concerns of our families and of our teachers coming back to the buildings. When the Board voted unanimously on August 4 to start the school year with virtual learning, the decision was not made lightly. We are continuing to monitor the situation and hope that things will improve so that we can get students back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Anyone else?
This is Mr. Bigford.
Yes, Mr. Bigford.
I would also like to say thank you to the parents, teachers, students, and community members who've emailed us, and a very big thank you to both our Superintendent and the President of our Board, President Williams, for responding to each of those emails. I know that was, as a Board, that's one of the duties that, I don't want to say we assigned, but that the President does take on, and she's done so admirably, and I hope people have appreciated her responses. I too have read all the emails and comments and have heard from many people. I would like to publicly voice support for those people who advocated for more flexible options for teachers, either to work from their classrooms or teach from home. I, like many people, was sent home from my office when Governor Hogan closed schools and businesses, and I have not returned, and I know I've worked harder in the past several months than I ever have, albeit some days in my PJs. I also want to say that I'm a firm believer of the process, and I would hope that people may not understand, but in the school board world, the Board of Education hires the Superintendent to run the operations of the school system, so I respect Dr. Michael's right to run the school system as he sees fit, and I look forward to the presentation later in this meeting. I would say I think our end goal is very clear, that all of us want to see students and teachers safely return to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there anyone else who would like to offer a comment?
Mrs. Williams, this is Mr. Ridenhour. I'd like to echo, if you don't mind, Mr. Bigford's statements. I too agree with him. I feel that there should be a little more flexibility as far as our virtual learning is concerned. I know we're going to have a presentation about it here, and maybe some of your, the answers given will placate some of you, some will not be placated, and I'm hoping that it will give me an enlightenment so that I can jump on board with what we're going to do here in the next few months, because right now, I'm a little concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Is there anyone else?
Yes, this is Mrs. Fisher.
Yes, Mrs. Fisher.
I too have read the many, many emails that we have received, and as the others have, I thank you for your suggestions, your concerns. There is one concern that, because our President responds, I couldn't respond to the emails that had this question, but I'll answer it now. A number of people made a comment about the survey that was completed and wasn't due until the actual day we made the decision to go with virtual learning. That particular survey was not designed to come to the Board to help make any decision. That survey was created to help the staff in their endeavors to put together the very best learning program and logistic program they could do for whatever situation was going to be decided upon. So that did not enter into our decision. I just thought everyone who had a question about that or a concern should know that. Again, thank you to the staff that has been working very hard all summer, to the teachers that have had to throw together a crisis learning program. We know it wasn't perfect, but the whole country was doing pretty much the same thing, and I appreciate all that you have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there anyone else?
Yes, this is Mr. Stauffer. I too think that there should be some flexibility about teachers, because several teachers have contacted me and I've read in the emails, and I do worry about if teachers do work a certain period of time during the day, that they won't have that flexibility to contact students in the evenings as they did back during the springtime. So I'll be asking some questions about that, about perhaps dividing the time up, because I do feel that some of the students apparently were only reachable during the evening hours, and I just want to say that it's been a tough decision for the Board to decide to go back to virtual learning. Once we made that decision...
Mr. Stauffer, we've lost your audio.
And yesterday, I was on a meeting. Can you hear me?
We can now.
I was not muted. It didn't show that, so I don't know. Anyhow, I'll be asking some questions about teacher flexibility during the presentation later on, and yesterday, I was on a meeting, online meeting, of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee. There were 18 school districts on that meeting. Six were not represented, and counting all 18 that were on that meeting are going back virtually to start school, including Garrett County, which was a surprise to me, because I can't think that the Internet service out that way with the mountains and so forth and everything else can be that great. And counting Rooster County in Maryland, that made 19. I can't speak of the other five. Frederick County had originally announced it was going hybrid. It's now going virtual and everything. So it's throughout the state. It's tough. There are a lot of serious decisions to make, and I just hope that the public and everybody else concerned will try to stick with us while we navigate this minefield, as I call it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? Okay, we'll move on. We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move right into new business. Our first agenda item under new business is consideration of the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2020-2021 school year.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the Board. This is Teri Baker, Director of Human Resources. I'm happy to say we have with us this evening Emery Hines, who is the President of the Washington County Educational Support Personnel. This evening, we'd like to request approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Educational Support Personnel and the Washington County Board of Education.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Is there a motion?
Mrs. Williams? This is Mrs. Murray. I move to approve the contact, contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Do we have any questions, or is there any discussion? Okay, we'll move to the vote. Dr. Pew, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Yes, Mr. Bigford?
Gladly vote aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
An absolute aye.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Stauffer?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
And Mr. Bakum?
Thank you, Dr. Pew. We have six affirmative votes, the student member concurring. We do have approval then of the contract agreement. Thank you to all. Our next item under consideration is this evening's consent agenda with Mr. Scott Bechtel, our Supervisor of Purchasing, presenting. Mr. Bechtel?
Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have four items for your review. The Purchasing Review Committee has reviewed these items, and they are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel. Is there a motion?
Madam President, this is Mr. Bigford. I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for science laboratory supplies and equipment for Vincent Roth-Gro academic center to Fisher Science Education at a cost of $34,686.65. Flynn Scientific Incorporated at a cost of $11,144.95. Sergeant Welsh at a cost of $6,082. Vernier at a cost of $31,568.26. And Carolina Biological Supply Company at a cost of $11,239.39. Adobe Suite licenses renewal to digital information services at a cost of $55,534.50. G Suite Enterprise licenses to amplified IT at a cost of $57,600. And Google Voice licenses to amplified IT at a cost of $189,360.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Is there a second to Mr. Bigford's motion?
This is Mrs. Murray, a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any questions, or is there any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. Dr. Pew, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Yes, Mr. Bigford?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher? Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Bakum?
Aye.
And Mr. Ridenhour, do you want to check your mic?
I'm sorry, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. I have six affirmative votes with the student member concurring, so the consent agenda is unanimously approved. Next on the agenda is the Superintendent's report, and the first item under that report is recognition of recipients of the 2020 National Association of Agricultural Educators from the, it's an award from the Maryland Agriculture Teachers Association. Dr. Michael?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I'm going to call on Cody Pine, our Supervisor of Career and Technology Education, to do both our recognitions. The first one's going to be of three of our teachers for being recognized in specific areas, and then one of our outstanding students, some recognition of accomplishments she has for recent offers that she's now acquired in the state level. So, Mr. Pine, I hope you're on?
Yes.
From here, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Good evening, President Williams, members of the Board, and Dr. Michael. Tonight, we'd like to take a few minutes and just celebrate our teachers and our students for the work that they've been doing. This summer, at the Maryland Agriculture Teachers Association, they held their annual professional development and award ceremony for all agriculture education teachers across the state of Maryland. At that convention, we had three agriculture education teachers nominated and selected for their outstanding pedagogy and instruction within their classroom. First, we had Quinn Cashell Martin. Quinn is an agriculture education teacher at Boonsborough High School and the co-FFA advisor there. She was nominated and selected for the Outstanding Early Career Teacher through the National Association of Agriculture Educators. Next, we have Elizabeth Comstock. Elizabeth is an instructor of agriculture education at Boonsborough High School, and she was nominated and selected by the National Association of Agriculture Educators for the Teacher Turned the Key in Environmental Studies. Next, we have Mr. Thomas Mizony. Tom is an agriculture education instructor at Clear Spring High School, and he was selected by the National Association of Agriculture Educators as the Outstanding Agricultural Mechanics Teacher of the Year. These three teachers are finalists now for the National Association of Agriculture Educators, a nationwide organization. These three will have the opportunity to compete to become the National Teachers of the Years in their respective categories. Please help me in congratulating them. Next, we have an outstanding student recognition. This summer, the Maryland Future Farmers of America held their state convention in Lithica, Maryland. At that convention, we had Ms. Helen Lettingham of the Boonsborough FFA chapter, recognized for a proficiency award, but also nominated and selected as the State Vice President for the Maryland FFA Association. Ms. Lettingham will now take her leadership ability to all FFA chapters in all counties in the state of Maryland. She will help lead the Maryland FFA Association in all leadership, professional development, and career development event areas. We would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Ms. Lettingham and all of her outstanding accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pine. Appreciate those two reports, certainly congratulate our three teachers and their recognition at the state level. We wish them the very best at the national level, and certainly, Helen, we recognize you for being a state officer. That's quite an accomplishment. We're very proud of you. At this point, Mrs. Williams, we'd like to move into a PowerPoint of our Return to Learn Plan. This is not our full recovery plan. Our recovery plan is actually a narrative, probably about 70 pages long with addendums beyond that, and we will be providing a draft of that to the Board here in the coming days. We will have that posted according to the state guidelines by August 14 through our website, but the general information that's in that document is going to be shared here by staff in just a minute. I do want to, before they begin, just thank the many, many people that have contributed to the thought process to get us to this point with the Return to Learn Plan. I know some of the Board members pointed out, this has not been an easy process. It's very difficult, even though we've had this summer now to work and create our plan. There's still much work to do. I think this will be a living document, even though we're required by the state to have it posted by the 14th. I think things could change and morph as we go into the year. I'd love to see students return as soon as possible, but we just simply do not know when that will be. We're optimistic that we'll be ready for that, and we'll take them back one at a time, if that's the Board's desire, or any way we can get there, especially for our high-risk students. We definitely want to see that they're back in our schools and learning at the appropriate levels. Our goal and our plan is that students do not miss a year. I think there are some plans out there, while their goal might be that, their plan might reflect just kind of a continuity of learning. Our plan is beyond that. We're trying to make third grade be a true third grade, sixth grade math be true sixth grade math, to the very best of our ability, make sure that students don't miss a beat as they move forward in their life and their schooling. So again, I would say this is a living document. Again, I can't express my gratitude, not only to our leadership team and the people that have worked so hard on this, but to our teachers, ESP, administrators, parents, even a couple Zoom sessions Dr. Willow had with students, those who filled out surveys, guided our decision-making process to this point. So all of that information's been very helpful. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Pew. He's going to give us a brief introduction. Mr. Jeff Prue then is going to tell us a little bit about our logistics and health and safety measures we've taken. Dr. Willow's going to walk us through a lot of the curriculum work that really is the meat and heart of our plan, and then it'll be back to Dr. Pew for the implementation process. And Mrs. Williams, I have two items after the Return to Learn Plan has been presented. Thank you. Dr. Pew?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. As you stated, the Maryland State Department of Education requires each local school system to design a recovery plan for students to return in the 2020-2021 school year. This evening, we've prepared an overview of school opening for our community. We're confident in the collaborative work that happened to create this great plan to keep students and staff safe, to ensure learning, and to establish a professional and supportive learning environment, so that we are all ready together when that first student is able to be back in school. In April of 2020, the students' first COVID-19 task board... In April of 2020, the students' first COVID-19 task force, representing staff, teachers, students, and parents, convened to plan together to meet the educational needs of Washington County Public School students during the pandemic. The over 50-member work groups gathered and organized information from all sources to advise the superintendent of the concerns, questions, and ideas for student learning and achievement for during marking period four, over the summer, and for reentry into learning for marking period one. The Washington County Teachers Association and Washington County Educational Support Personnel Bargaining Representatives provided questions for consideration throughout April and May, and we've continued routine communication through this summer. In June and July, additional stakeholder feedback was sought through the surveys. 746 teachers, 90 administrators, and over 7,000 parents and guardians responded. We thank you to those who responded for reviewing and completing those surveys. The information was intended to gather broad stakeholder feedback so that the input could be used to design learning, whether students were learning in person or online. Over 200 teachers were asked to provide input through summer workshops. Those workshops continue even this week to provide input about what is taught best during synchronous face-to-face time with the teacher and classmates, and what students are able to complete asynchronously offline at different times and on their own. In early July 2020, a second stakeholder work group was formed to collaboratively draft this working plan to return to learning for the fall of 2020. Dr. Willow led curriculum and instruction groups, and Mr. Prue led the operations, health, and safety work groups. While we know conditions, data, research, guidance, and opinions will continue to change and evolve, what we can commit to you is that these principles will guide our decision-making as we work together to ensure the health and safety, academic progress, and social and emotional wellness for all of our students and staff. We will view this work through an equity lens as we discuss the intended or unintended impact of decisions on traditionally underserved populations. We will work together tirelessly to remove barriers for learning for our families, understanding that we'll need to work together to be flexible and agile as restrictions and guidance continue to evolve and change. As you know, since the Board of Education decision on July 14th, we've been focusing on how to return to learn in a planned and coordinated distance learning effort on August 31st. The working plan built on all that we shared together. We experienced this spring as students, as parents, and as staff. Today, we'll be sharing information with you, implementing what we've learned in a working plan. Mr. Jeff Prue will share what his work groups recommended to maintain healthy operations. Dr. Gary Willow will share information related to curriculum and instruction, and I'll finish up with information about implementation of distance learning. Our goal is to do a better job than ever of meeting each individual student's needs, beginning in a virtual environment, preparing to add small groups as permitted, and ultimately moving to face-to-face when possible. Mr. Prue? Is Mr. Prue on?
I'll go check on Mr. Prue. If we want to advance forward, we could go ahead with Dr. Willow. I'll check with Mr. Prue.
Sorry about that. Good evening, board members. Thank you, Dr. Pew. Our staff have created several safety plans for the return of staff to buildings. Health office staff have identified several useful videos to share with staff on the proper donning and donning, donning and donning of personal protective equipment. This is a specific procedure to follow to ensure that the wearing of PPE is appropriate for safety and put on and removed in a sanitary way. And in fact, these videos were used for the training of staff that were part of extended school year classes for some of our special needs students this summer. The operations and purchasing teams have procured significant amounts of personal protective equipment. For instance, we've procured over 300,000 disposable masks in preparation for students' return for our families that do not or cannot provide a mask for their own child. And in addition to that, just within the past few days, the State Department of Health sent a shipment to us that was received of 130 cloth masks that we can distribute to students and staff. We have 800 pairs of goggles for eye protection, 4,700 face shields for staff that may be working more intimately with special needs students who may not be able to wear a mask, over 1 million vinyl gloves in various sizes, 83,000 nitro exam gloves, 2,700 disinfecting wipe buckets with towels. These buckets are filled with our own standard EPA-approved disinfectant. We have an ample supply to have a bucket in every classroom and multi-use space for easy staff use. And lastly, we have procured nearly 5,000 gallons of sanitizer with pumps for classroom use and 8,000 4-ounce bottles for personal and use on our school buses. This will allow for each classroom and multi-use space to have a gallon bottle and a backup supply. In fact, sanitizer, while we're using a product that is different from what we were using prior to the closing in March, sanitizer has come back into the market and can be readily restocked at this time. Since the early onset of the virus and prior to the March closing, staff has been encouraging frequent handwashing and the use of alcohol-based sanitizer to reduce the spread of germs. Principals and operations team members are analyzing the traffic flow in every school building. Signs are being printed to be hung identifying single movements of traffic in various hallways to limit the potential for path-crossing congestion in hallways. Additionally, principals are identifying the large locations in their buildings where they can safely meet with groups of staff with more than physically distance-required spacing. As we know, through contact tracing and all that we're seeing from the Center for Disease Control, folks are standard risk to be infected within six feet. We intend that if we're having groups together, that the space in between individuals can definitely exceed eight, 10, and 12 feet to reduce the risk for any staff member. Purchasing staff is also procuring supplies to limit the effect of germs in the classroom. Individual school supply kits are being created for every elementary student with pencils, markers, crayons, and scissors, among other items, to eliminate the shared supply buckets. Our staff have been engaged to create a similar supply list for those individual classes. Lastly, for staff and students, we cannot remind the community enough that if you're feeling sick, you shouldn't stay home. Gone are the days where we try to gut out the head cold. The symptoms are all too similar to COVID-19, and we must be careful to watch out for the greater good. As we look to the return of students, staff has been diligent in following guidelines as established by the federal, state, and local governments, and has been in regular communication with the Washington County Health Department. Per the governor's most recent order from last week, face coverings are required to be worn by all individuals ages five and up as they are able, or really, as truth be told, as they are medically able, they need to wear masks in inside settings and also in outside settings when they cannot maintain physical distancing. Protocols were established at the end of last school year for the collection of materials, and the operations team has created procedures for the regular and constant cleaning of school facilities with a focus on high-touch surfaces as well as the nightly cleaning and disinfecting of buildings. Backpack and handheld electrostatic sprayers have been purchased for this regular disinfecting. The sprayers place a charge into our EPA-approved disinfectant so that it aggressively adheres to surfaces and objects, disinfecting them on contact. They make the disinfecting process much more thorough and efficient than manual spraying and wiping. Maintenance staff have engaged the assistance of an external firm to assist with a full inventory of filters used in every piece of air handling equipment throughout the system. We're in the process of ordering and receiving MERV-13, which stands for Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value Filters, that are the recommended level from the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers. In fact, many of our air conditioning systems that have been renewed or replaced since approximately 2007, 2008 already contain MERV-13 filters in them. The higher-rated filters provide more surface area per plet and are better able to capture airborne particles. Filters are being scheduled for replacement as needed, depending on the lifecycle of the filter, depending on the scope of the air handling system. In a lot of scenarios, a pre-filter is used to gather large items before they get to the actual MERV-13 filters, which extends the life of those filters. As public buildings, schools are, schools have air handling systems that are designed to capture and introduce outside air into the building to reduce carbon dioxide levels and create healthier environments. Safety standards have been identified for pupil transportation as well. A standard 24-seat bus is rated for capacity of up to 72 students. This is three students per seat. A standard route for WCPS averages about 50 students. Moving forward, routes will be limited to 24 riders, one per seat. Students living in the same household will be allowed to sit together, but that will not increase the capacity of the bus. It will only create an open seat on the bus. Route inspections, routine inspections are planned to continue in accordance with Department of Transportation and COMAR standards. Drivers are being trained on the proper regular cleaning and sanitizing of buses. Routine cleaning of contact surfaces will be done between each route, and deeper sanitizing will be done at the end of AM and PM shift. So as a school moves, we have four tiers of buses. As a, as a bus moves from a tier-one school to a tier-two school, the driver will stop, they will, they will disinfect the high-touch surfaces before they move on to the next school and reintroduce a new set of students. A few handheld sprayers have also been purchased for use on the bus lot for more effective disinfecting. We also anticipate higher levels of private or personal transportation. Through the survey, parents indicated that roughly 60% were at least somewhat concerned with their child's ability to socially distance on the bus. As such, schools are preparing for longer parent drop-off lines at arrival and dismissal times. The food service team has several plans in place for both virtual and in-person learning. Initially, we will be continuing our school and community-based meal pickup locations. Food nutrition service staff have also been contacted by several community partners looking to have meal service provided at their childcare centers, so I expect the number of drop-off locations to grow. For in-person learning, staff is prepared for contactless service. Handheld badge readers have been tested and purchased to be able to scan the student's ID through a barcode. Both the Synergy Student Information System and the NutriKids Food Service System have the ability to print individual barcodes for student use. Staff is also pursuing both suppliers to see if the barcode can be viewable on their individual apps for direct scanning from a phone or iPad, just as you would do in a private sector restaurant. Meals will include individually packaged items to limit the potential for any cross-contamination and to speed service. Students should plan to eat their meals in the classroom to limit group sizes in the cafeteria. And since the cafeteria will be empty, additional service lines are planned to enhance the speed of service at the point of service to limit the amount of time students are in lines and reduce the potential for not following social distancing guidelines. And for my last slide, I would like to discuss the plans we have for handling potential cases of COVID-19 for staff and students. A small team comprised of HR, benefits, health, and operations have collaborated to become a COVID response team. Plans have been created to follow CDC, Maryland Department of Health, and local health department guidance, and been reviewed and vetted with the Washington County Health Department. The plans include procedures to identify individuals who are potentially sick and being sent for testing, to determine their close contacts for contact tracing, and quarantining staff and/or students, and to provide follow-up cleaning and disinfecting. Decisions to be made in terms of whether whole classes of schools we quarantine will be made in conjunction with the Washington County Health Department based on the most recent science and guidance at the time of the incident. It is worth noting here that standards and procedures are changing rapidly, and the team is keeping abreast of those changes as they happen. And Mrs. Williams, at this point, this is the operations logistics section, and I'd be happy to, I think, stop in the presentation to accept any questions that board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Colleagues, do you have questions? I'm not able to see hands, so if you do have a question, would you please just identify yourself before speaking?
This is Mr. Beckford. I have a question.
Go ahead.
So Jeff, with the COVID response team, could you go over that again? How many people are on it? And how will we adjust that as we start to reopen schools?
Yeah, the cross-functional team of seven at this juncture, we've, we've identified the possibility of adding additional team members with the possibility of returning staff, we return students to buildings if there's a greater need. We want to keep the group close-knit because, of course, we want to make sure that we're protecting the health privacy of each individual member that may be potentially exposed to COVID-19. So we may only engage individuals as needed, but we are in close contact with the health department. You know, they are only sharing essential information with us at this juncture, and we will continue to engage them, work with them on individual cases as they come up. I'm not sure if that answers your question, Mr. Beckford, but it is, you know, a bit of a more private standard. I mean, we're, we're prepared and engaged to begin contact tracing with individuals that have been identified to us. So that, you know, current, there is a lapse in testing, where sometimes they're taking, you know, 24 to 72 hours or potentially even longer. So we've begun some contact tracing even before the health department begins. So I don't, I'm not sure if that helps answer your question.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, Mr. Prue, I think it's safe to proceed.
Thank you. Mr. Willow, I think you'll proceed with the next slides.
Yes. Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, and Board of Education members. A curriculum committee was formed in early July to continue the work of the previous task force. The curriculum committee had five subcommittees. The first subcommittee was the Curriculum Standards Team, and it had teacher representation from pre-K through 12th grade and representation in all content areas. All Maryland college career-ready standards were prioritized. This group worked on addressing how much time is needed to teach the Maryland college and career-ready standards in their respective content areas. The second subcommittee, the Implementation Committee, took the feedback from the Standards Committee and the results from the parent and staff surveys to create our distance learning schedules. This year, each school system is required to take student attendance during distance learning. The Attendance Committee created guidelines for taking student attendance during synchronous learning. Our social-emotional learning committee examined ways that our staff could provide social-emotional learning support to our students. Our professional development committee focused on best practices for online learning, professional development opportunities for teachers and administrators. We also explored ways to assist parents and community members through distance learning. Our technology committee focused on accessibility, device management, and curriculum implementation. When schools closed on March 13th of 2020, very few people thought that would be the last time during the school year that instruction would occur from our buildings. Our staff members worked together and created a distance learning model in a very short period of time. We had a number of teachers and administrators work with new resources to increase opportunities for student feedback and engagement. However, we also know there were challenges with our spring distance learning model. We asked teachers, administrators, parents, and a student group for feedback on the Spring 2020 Distance Learning Plan. We used the feedback from the survey to help create our Return to Learn Plan. I want to take a moment to thank all of our parents, teachers, and administrators for reviewing and completing their respective surveys. Surveys were intended to gather broad stakeholder feedback so the input could be used whether students are learning in person or online. The slide that you have in front of you was the top four parent priorities for improved distance learning. We're going to move on to the next slide. We also asked parents, administrators, and teachers, how often do you think classes should meet virtually to ensure that students are able to meet Maryland state standards and accountability measures? These three to five times per week was the overall highest category for all three groups. We also asked how long should each session be in order for students to achieve the same desired outcomes as face-to-face instruction? And again, the overall category with the highest response was 31 to 60 minutes. We use this information to create an elementary schedule and a secondary schedule. The elementary schedule allows for daily instruction in math and English, and math and English language arts. Encore periods are taught daily and follow a traditional elementary rotation. At the primary level, students will have more opportunities for small group and individual instruction. There are opportunities for students to get extra help, and there's also opportunities built in to receive help in the evening as necessary. We'll be working with our schools and district-level support to be able to provide the help that our parents and our students need in the evening hours. The secondary schedule allows for daily instruction in all classes for 35 minutes. This schedule allows us to honor student and parent course requests from the spring. Special education intervention periods and supports are built into the daily schedule. There are opportunities for students to get tutoring and instruction in the afternoon, and again, evening hours if necessary. The schedule allows for flex- The schedule allows for flexibility for both Tech High and Barbara Ingram programs. The schedule allows for groups of students or all students to return to the classroom when appropriate. WCPS will use diagnostic and county-wide assessments to determine present levels of student performance in math and reading. Students who display a gap in learning will have opportunities during and beyond the school day to receive extra instruction and support. School-based administration is building these supports into the daily schedule of students. When we talk about return to school, we see a priority for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten. We see a priority for our vulnerable populations, and we also see a priority for our programs, specialized programs, such as CTE, Career Technology and Education programs that are at all of our high schools across the county. I think it's important to stress that we're in this together. Our distance learning schedule has built opportunities for weekly professional development. Teachers will have the opportunity to earn MSDE credits during the school day. We will be providing additional opportunities for our parents to learn about our instructional resources and our student devices. And I'm proud to share that we are partnering with our licensed daycare providers for an opportunity to meet with them and to work with them on Saturday, August 22nd from 9:00 to 12:00, where we will go over our curriculum resources, our curriculum supports, and work with them to address the needs that they might have in order to support distance learning across all grade levels in our early, in order to help make sure that they have what they need instruction to our students that are in their care during the day. So at this point, I know that Dr. Pugh will be getting more into some of the implementation. So some of your questions that you may have for me may come later on in the presentation, but I'll gladly answer any questions that you might have in regards to the slides that I've shared so far.
Colleagues, do you have any questions thus far for Dr. Willow?
This is Mr. Stauffer. Again, some of these may come in Dr. Pugh's presentation. So if they are, Dr. Willow, just say so. You talk about providing social, emotional assistance. Can you give us a brief idea of how that's going to be done since we are on virtual?
Sure. So our counselors, a good number of those resources will come from our counselors and our social workers. Some of the topics, lessons that have been developed already are dealing with anxiety, stress, resilience, self-regulation. We see our counselors entering classrooms virtually to be able to provide direct instructions, but we also have Google Forms set up where students can access their counselor just by making a simple electronic request. And the counselor, social worker, whichever resource that we have that best fits that need of a student would be able to respond. So we still see our counselors or social workers as an important part of working and partnering with our teachers to still deliver the social, emotional learning components, whether we're in distance learning or whether we are in a traditional setting.
Would we ask social workers to make home visits?
We have done, in some cases, administrators did make home visits in the spring. PPW's made home visits in the spring. I think it depends on the support that's needed. You know, I think we have some opportunities where we can do a lot of that virtually. But when we need to respond, if there is a true crisis situation and a student is in crisis, I think any administrator would jump to help, any staff member would jump to help our students. So I think it's probably by a case-by-case basis, Mr. Stauffer, depending on the need.
And my last question. When will the assessment of learning gaps take place? I would assume at the beginning of school. And what diagnostic and local assessments will be used to assess the learning gaps?
So we are using existing assessments that we already have built in. We'll be using PrevyLearn, ERI, at across our different grade levels. We don't necessarily see that happening right away. We want to get students back into the flow of learning. We see it happening through that first marking period when it best fits in. So for us, we don't want to do it that very first couple of weeks that we're back as we're getting back into the flow. But we also know that there are learning gaps that need to be met. So I think it'll be different a little bit based on the content area, based on our testing calendar, and based on what we see with the needs of our students and this particular content area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Willow, I have just a few. I'm looking at the slide a few back that says diagnostic and local assessments. Midway down the page, "Small groups of students return to buildings." Could you define for me "small"?
I think it depends. You know, for us, it's always about meeting the needs of our students. So we know it's hard to say every particular student in this group needs to return. I think what we would be looking at are based on where do we see our students that distance learning is not working for them? Where are our challenges? How do we meet the needs of that? We've talked about small groups. Obviously, we would follow all regulations, you know, that the health department or that the state or that any other agency might put out. But we would see the groups being defined really based on the needs of each student within that group. You know, it's hard to say every EL student needs to return. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, based on what we're seeing, the level of engagement, and are we able to meet the supports of those students? It's, well, probably a little bit more concern would be looking at some of our CTE programs and being helped, helping those students be able to get the hours that they need for accreditation, for certification. So we do want to try to build in those hands-on experiences that are required for some of those programs. We are prepared to begin with distance learning, but at some point, we need to also honor our, you know, our curriculum. But always, I can't stress enough, we will always act in the best interest of student and staff safety. We don't want to rush into it and create a situation where it's not safe for our students or our staff members.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. My second question then, same page. Next bullet item there, vulnerable populations. What would we be considering as vulnerable?
Perhaps it's REL students, perhaps it's special ed, some of our special ed groups. You know, in particular, we know, we've brought this up, we've talked about the challenges of distance learning for some of our Marshall Street students, some of our Life Skills students. Perhaps it's our students that despite our best efforts to remove all barriers, we're still having issues with connectivity. It really begins to depend. I always hate to define exactly what that looks like, President Williams, because I think it's going to be fluid based on what we are responding to the needs of our students. And what we might find is that for some students, you know, in populations that we wouldn't always consider vulnerable, still need that face-to-face instruction. And so I don't want to promise tonight that this would be our first group that we bring back when in reality, three weeks from now, we're looking at, you know, our first, or four weeks, we're looking at our first week in school, second week in school, and we're working through different challenges that we didn't see right now.
Thank you. And then my last question on that same slide with regard to specialized programs. You mentioned certificate programs. Would you consider those among the first to come back? You know, how if, are we going to bring back all of the CTE students? And if not all, how will we know which ones will come back first? How are we going to determine that? What will be the criteria for deciding that?
I think we're going to work with our teachers. We're going to work with our content specialists, our supervisors. And I think what we would need to do in that case is, again, look at what we're meeting with the needs of our curriculum. Are we able to, with certain programs, are they better suited for distance learning? Or do they need that particular face-to-face instruction? And I think it's by a program-by-program decision, again, based on what we see the needs are as we're, you know, going through this. And those needs could change over time. It could even be where, you know, we're rotating maybe different programs. And again, I don't want to, like, pinpoint us down to an exact, this would be our first program, because I think with distance learning, as Dr. Michael alluded to with our Return to Learn Plan, it's a living document. And we need to be able to respond and be flexible to the needs of our students and the needs of our community.
Thank you very much, Dr. Willow.
Thank you.
Colleagues, do you have any further questions for Dr. Willow? Okay, I guess we move ahead then.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, Mrs. Murray?
Yes, yes. I'm just wondering about people that can't log on with their children until the evening. How will that affect, say, the grading? Or will their attendance be counted? I mean, as long as they log on that day, they are counted in attendance?
So our attendance, our attendance policy monitors what we would do if we were in a normal school environment. So when the first period of the day or the first class of the day, all teachers take attendance in synergy. And then at the secondary level, we would continue to take attendance period by period in the sense of what we already do. And so that's how an attendance piece would look, and it would look whether we were in a traditional setting or whether we were in a distance learning setting. To answer your question about the evening, we want to remove barriers to learning during the day. So the question that we're working with our principals on, the process that we see developing with our principals, as Dr. Michael alluded to, beginning tomorrow and continuing into next week, is what are the barriers that prevent that child from logging on during the day? Is it with a daycare provider that doesn't have access? So how do we help that daycare provider perhaps get access? What other barriers? There's the parents not there to help assist, and the person that is able to assist doesn't feel comfortable. How do we help that? For students that cannot get on during the day, we will have something for them in the evening to work with them. We don't want to leave any student behind. And I know personally, having three young kids, the struggle of coming home and in the evening working with kids and not being able to talk with someone or have access to someone. We will have those supports in place to be able to help our parents and our students continue to learn in the evening. And if that's what's best for working with them, we'll continue to do that and provide whatever and be flexible to be able to meet their needs.
Thank you, Dr. Willow.
Hello, this is Mr. Boqum. I have a question. On Mrs. Murray's point about attendance, what would have happened if a student were to show up to an online call five minutes late? Or what would happen if a student failed to visit any of their online classes?
So I think what we would follow, well, I know what we would follow is what we would do if you were five minutes late to a traditional class. You would be marked tardy, and tardy means that you were late, but you're present. Typically, at the state level, and in the same case here, at the state level, COMAR defines what attendance. In order to be full-day attendance, you have to be in 50% of your classes. So think of a typical example. A student checks out to go to a doctor's appointment and returns, full day. A student checks out, depending on the time of the day, could be counted full day, might be a partial day. So we see attendance being no different if we are in a traditional setting or in an online distance learning setting. We follow those same rules as defined by COMAR.
Dr. Willow, Mr. Stauffer here again. A few minutes ago, you said about having things in place to help parents log on at night and everything. Can we have a few examples of what they would be? I mean, because, you know, if we have teachers on from 9:00 to 2:30 and going to hold them to a workday, they're not going to be available in the evening. So what are we going to do there specifically?
That's a great question, Mr. Stauffer. So we believe that our teachers during the day, their day ends when their day ends. And that doesn't mean that, you know, we've heard stories of teachers pulling long evenings, and my heart goes out to them, and I thank them for their efforts in the spring. But we see different levels of support. So at the elementary level, what we've talked about, just as an example, is a live hotline where you can call in at the school-based level and receive additional supports. We've talked about district-level supports. We've talked about recording certain classrooms, not with the students. Let me be 100% clear on that, but providing instructional resources for parents in the evening. And then, Mr. Stauffer, we've talked about what we've always done. We've always had, if you think about it, we've always had students attend evening high. Now, we consider that to be more of a secondary. So we've talked about what that can look like at the elementary level to be able to support those needs as we work through this process. And we also have to recognize that the process, the needs are going to change. We're going to have students where maybe they were available during the day, and that suddenly changes. Or we now have a situation where the parent is able to help during the day. And I think that's the piece where we have to continue to be flexible and work together to best meet the needs of our students and our parents.
Well, what do we, I mean, something specific? What kind of things are we considering? I mean, can you give us a little more detailed example of something? I'm not trying to pressure you or anything, but I'm having trouble understanding how we're going to reach those students. Are we expecting the parents to do, you say about providing resources? Are we expecting the parents to do the teaching in the evening or what? I'm a little confused.
Okay, Mr. Stauffer, that's a fair question. So let me try to take it through this way. I think, and I'm not trying to allude your question, but what I am saying is if a parent has a question about a resource or something that happened during the day, the outcome there could be that it's a quick phone call, communication with a district level or teacher-level support and be able to help assist that parent with that immediate question or help. But if you have a student that we can't remove the barriers to daytime learning, meaning that a student can't log on during the day, then what we're talking about doing is creating a different experience where they have access to a teacher in the evening. So I'm not trying to not answer your question. It just depends on what the needs are of our parent and our student.
So in other words, what you're saying is we need to continue to tweak these ideas, basically. That's what I'm hearing.
I think so. They'll continue to further develop as we continue to work together on what that looks like in the evening. But from a secondary standpoint, we have students that take American government during the day, and they take American government in the evening. We just call it Evening High School. We've seen that with all of our classes that are offered during the day have always been offered in the evening. So that doesn't change at that secondary level. At the elementary level, that would be a newer concept. And what we want to be able to do, again, is to, first of all, always explore what are the barriers to preventing the student from accessing the materials, the synchronous learning during the day? And if we can't remove those barriers, then we're not just going to let that student not receive an education. We're going to have a different option or program that best meets the needs of that students in the evening. And that's all I'm saying. And that could look, begin to look different depending on the needs of our community.
Okay, thank you. I'll be interested to see how that unveils, because it's obvious to me, I think, that teaching the high school classes might be easier. And I don't want to say, I don't want that to turn out the way it sounds, but, you know, I worry about elementary kids. I guess what I'm saying is the high school kids are more proficient, maybe handling the technology than perhaps a first grader, a second grader, that type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Williams, I have one more thing to add, if I may.
Absolutely, Mrs. Murray. Go ahead.
Dr. Willow, one of the things I'm worried about is- Dr. Willow, one of the things I'm worried about is having enough tech support. Just yesterday, there was a problem. My grandson got on, he's going into the fourth grade, it's a summer program. He got online with his teacher, and then something happened, and he lost his connection. And he couldn't get back on. His dad is a tech person and couldn't get back on. They called, they couldn't get through to the central office, they called the school. The school said, you have to call the teacher. The teacher was teaching the lesson, blah, blah, blah. You know, I mean, these are the things that are frustrating. Are we going to have enough tech support to get these people logged on and staying on throughout the lessons?
Well, and that's why I understand that frustration. We've heard that frustration from the spring as well, with inconsistent Wi-Fi at times, the dropping of lessons. So what we've talked about, the other frustration that we heard from our parents in the survey, that while you can submit a Google form, you want to be able to talk to someone. You want to be able to get your problem resolved. And that's why we've talked about adding, that's why we're adding the ability for people to call in the evening or during the day to be able to help with those tech questions. I can't promise you that you'll get an immediate, immediate response, but we're going to do our very best to solve that, because we want students in the classroom. Sometimes, I think this year, what we'll have that'll be going, that'll make this process easier with the newer devices that have been purchased, with us being able to all operate from the same device at the secondary and elementary level. I think that we'll have better consistency and we'll have better resources for both our teachers, our parents, that we'll be able to troubleshoot some of that on their own. But we always want to have support there to be able to help our students get back online. Or whatever other tech issues might occur.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Willow, if I might interrupt, I think part of what we see happening with our nighttime supports is something I see living long after, hopefully, soon after we're back in, but long, long after we're back into school. If you place a set of resources that Washington County Public Schools is designed to match our curriculum, and parents could access anytime they'd have a question or a need. I don't know that we'd be able to maintain the nighttime live person, but that might be a position that we'd want to consider for the future, that we would have part-time people working in the night, or even I see the day when people would work 8:00, 12:00 to 8:00, and be available that full-time to roll right into the evening high school time for elementary, middle, and high, for like that online question-type thing. But we're seeing a bank of resources available by content, by objective, by, you know, even just a particular lesson available to parents. Many of these resources are available in various contents. We're trying to tailor them specifically to Washington County Public Schools. Thank you.
Colleagues, are there any further questions for Dr. Willow? Okay, Dr. Willow, I think we're safe to move ahead.
Thank you.
So as we implement this working plan, our students will have a wide variety of not only the academic supports, but also the social and emotional supports that Mr. Stauffer referred to. Our counselors and social workers are available to work with students. And as you've come to expect from Washington County Public Schools, a rich educational experience includes meeting the needs of the whole child, including the mental and emotional well-being of students and staff. At the time of the closure in March, we had 20 active community agreements for access to mental health and behavior supports, and we're hoping to continue those partnerships. We have contracts with three mental health agencies to provide mental health services that are covered through grant funds. Two of the agencies are being paid for through the Safe Schools Fund Grant, and one is covered through funds from the local management board. We're also working on a contract with a local mental health agency that is providing substance abuse supports for adolescents. As the adults in this situation, it's imperative that we demonstrate the resilience and positive outlook that contributes to our students' emotional well-being. We'll continue to train staff to use trauma-informed practices and restorative approaches. Our beliefs and words transfer to students, and working together to learn new ways of supporting one another is important to the well-being of all of us. The students of Washington County need all of us to work together to demonstrate the confidence and belief that together we can make the best of this situation, and we can put the needs of the students first. It is critical to their future and to the future of our community. As we enter full-distance learning, it's important to note that learning packets will not be provided. The ideal learning experience possible at this time is to be online at the same time with teachers and students. To that end, we're committed to helping every family have internet access. If you're struggling with internet connectivity, work with providers to get reduced-cost access. We are also working actively with your local providers to assist families. If you do not have internet access, we'll have you contact your school, and they will help you complete the forms so that we can target supports to best meet your needs based upon where you live and what service providers are available. Schools will begin the year with the technology that they have. As the new devices arrive, they'll be distributed by schools. iPads have been ordered to replace every iPad in grades three through five, and the newest versions of the iPads that are returned from those grades will be redistributed to the students in pre-K through two. Chromebooks have been purchased for every middle and high school and will be quickly deployed upon arrival. Each school team is encouraged to develop or maintain their IT team, which is a group of teachers who are trained in using the devices specifically, who can then support additional teachers and families throughout the day and the evening. We heard loud and clear that we needed to use consistent platforms, and that it was overwhelming to parents and students to try to navigate through multiple systems. To that end, we'll be using Google Classroom as our primary place to house all resources and instruction for each student by class. Google Meet and Voice will also be the consistent platforms available right through that same classroom. We've provided information to staff, and we will be providing information to families regarding how to set up the classroom for ease of navigation for parents, students, and teachers. With some simple fixes, we can set it up so that each class is set up in a similar way, so that when you're entering a teacher's classroom, you don't have to figure out how they organized, but you can quickly move to the resources that are needed. And each teacher will be encouraged to have a home base where they keep the most current notices and information. Google Meet is the embedded secure video conferencing platform that will be replacing Zoom as soon as all of the functionality is available to use breakout rooms. Google Meet is being updated. It is what was on tonight's consent agenda, and as it is updated, then we will phase out Zoom. We're also using Google Voice at the request of principals and teachers instead of Remind or other such apps. Google Voice has all of the same features as these and is more secure. Teachers and administrators asked us to keep Google Voice, and we don't want parents having to register for multiple services that do the same thing. Professional learning will be important for the teachers and parents. Right now, training is available. There's training for Google Classroom, and it's available in the employee portal. Through professional learning, you follow the link for teachers and professional videos right to the Google Classroom. For parents, it's on the parent portal to the distance learning site, Parents, and then Google Classroom Overview. There's also training for the Chromebooks and the iPad for teachers. Again, same places for teachers on the employee portal, under professional learning, teachers' Chromebook or iPad. And for parents, again, on the iParent portal, under Devices and iCoverage, there's also then Chromebooks, where the basic training is available, as well as a few other resources. Our public information office will continue to send updates on the return-to-learn plan as soon as decisions are made. You can expect updates routinely, and information continues to be made available and then archived on our WCPS MD website. And according to the survey, texts, email, and newsletters are the preferred method of communication for our families. Our teachers and principals in schools will use consistent communication tools. The main contacts to support student learning are your teachers and principals. We encourage you to use the Google Classroom and ParentView to stay connected to support each student's learning. We will all have different roles and responsibilities this year, all working towards getting all students to meet the learning goals for the school year and to continuously remove barriers to that progress. What you can expect from administration and staff as they return to work safely is that they will have consistent classroom, class time, built-in tutoring, and small group time, as well as access to equipment and resources and technology to do demonstrations. Teachers will reorient to their buildings and practice healthy habits. Teachers can expect to have their planning time, time for professional learning, time for lunch, and the support of administration and one another. Students, it's important that you're aware of your schedule, as it is very important to be available for learning beginning on August 31st. You can expect to have a routine schedule and to dedicate appropriate time and energy to learning. Attendance is required. And to check that, I think Mr. Bakum asked how we would check that. We do want to have the cameras on. I have a daughter in 11th grade who sometimes did school under the covers. So we want cameras on, and we want you focused on the learning that's happening. You're also encouraged to engage in the learning with your peers and to communicate if you need assistance and support. We need to encourage you to be able to speak for yourself if you're not understanding something or if you need something presented in a different way. It's going to take both parties to be able to make sure that you continue learning through distance learning. Parents and caregivers, you can help your child identify a comfortable and quiet space to study and learn. You can check routinely on the Google Classroom for information on courses, assignments, and resources. Some teachers should voluntarily use the Google Classroom to provide feedback to students. However, you can expect to see grades regularly, at least every two weeks, to monitor your child's progress in ParentView. Reach out, as always, to your teacher and principal, and continue to communicate if you need additional assistance or support. As you may have heard yesterday, the Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association postponed the fall and winter sports. We know that extracurricular activities are important to the social and emotional development and the camaraderie that comes along with being a part of a team. We will continue the voluntary participation in the engagement activities through August 6th, at which time we will be ceasing those in-person activities until further guidance by the MPSSAA about students returning to campus. It's anticipated that further communication will come in early September. Currently, February 1 is the potential start for condensed three-sport competition season extending into June. Just like the decisions about academics mirror what's happening in athletics, band, chorus, visual and performing arts, and additional club and extracurricular activities will mirror the decisions that are made by the Interscholastic Athletics Guidance. At this point, we thank you for your time and attention, and we absolutely believe that together as a community, we can get through this. We can help our students learn and not lose a year.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. And board members, we'd be glad to entertain any other questions you might have. I hope you can see from the presentations tonight, a great deal of thought has gone into this. I can't tell you the countless hours. I do want to praise senior staff, but they're just a small piece of the hundreds of people that have thought and thought and thought and thought through this process. I mean, we're trying to replicate a year. The most important, by subject, by grade levels, so our children don't miss a year of school. We cannot afford that. We can't afford them to miss a month. We've got to recover from the spring, and our goal in Washington County Public Schools is to give every child the equivalent of whatever amount of time we miss away from each other, to make that a virtual experience that matches up to what they missed. I do think there'll be choices and decisions that families, parents, teachers, students will need to make. You know, we've obviously all gotten emailed, too much time, not enough time, concerned about screen time, all these types of things. We've tried to take into account a wide variety of those things and tried to reach an appropriate balance. But in doing so, we're still trying to pursue this being a rich experience that matches the most important pieces of each of the subjects and each of the grade levels. I can't express that enough. We could give you less, we could give you more, but our goal is to try to find that balance. But I refuse to write this year off, and we will not do that. And I'm confident with the team we have, our teachers, our administrators, our ESP staff, the talents and capabilities they have. We will make something very positive from this experience, I'm convinced. So I don't know if there's any other questions before I move on to a couple other topics, Mrs. Williams?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for questions or comments from board members, and I would ask that we be mindful of sharing the time, so that if you've asked a question or made a comment, that you wait a bit before you offer a second.
This is Mr. Stauffer. I'll start with one question. It seems to me that in the emails and the hundreds of emails that we've read, that there are teachers saying, you know, I will have to take some sort of leave, Family, I'm the Family Leave Act or the CARES Act, and this and that and the other. Do we have any projection at this time, any indication of the number of teachers that may take leave? And at what levels are they, elementary, middle, high?
Mr. Stauffer, this is Dr. Pew. I don't have levels, but I do have that there are 122 people working through various phases of getting information and determining whether or not they need or want leave. Of those 122, 19 have found childcare, and we're just continuing to evaluate each one individually. Each person's situation is unique.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Bickford. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bickford.
Dr. Michael, I know you had, just with our conversations through the different board meetings, that some schools had students that actively participated online, and other schools, you started to see a drop-off. If you start to see a drop-off in some of those classes where students aren't participating, we saw some of that planned, but could you talk about what you'd like to see happen?
Well, part of what we're going to talk about tomorrow with administrators will be a large part of their role, again, initially getting this up and rolling, where available resources are, who has students, who doesn't have students, those types of things. But then beyond that, a big part of this plan, I've described a little bit of the football analogy, I almost hate to use that with the public, but our goal is on August 31st, is go down and score on the opening drive. We want August 31st to be so good that students will come back to us on September 1st and September 2nd, and so on and so on. So part of that administrative role was going to be to make sure the students are online. So that starts with some attendance. It starts with contacting students even before the first day of school. It starts as soon as we realize we don't have students in school. We do this even when we're in school live. You know, we have roster students, we're supposed to have 22 students. Yeah, three students I don't have enrolled, and I have six students that haven't shown up. We, you know, we start looking for those students immediately. So we're going to count on administrators or brainstorming ideas, how they will reach out to their public, how they might go literally door-to-door. But most likely, start with phone and text and email and contacts that we have. You know, your child's missing, you know, second period, first period, missing the whole day. How can we help you get online? You're having issues with internet. Let's get you connected to that. You don't have interest in coming this year. You're required to be in school. What is your plan? Can we help you get signed up with homeschooling if we can't get you back into school? Those types of things. And I see that being an ongoing process. We're probably going to involve principals, assistant principal, counselors, probably some ESP staff in that. I think one of the best plans, one of our principals, I'll just say, Tech High, of course, we only had juniors and seniors, probably into the period, 10, 15 minutes in the period, they were already calling students if they had students that were missing. And I think they were one of the schools in some of their classes that had the largest amount of participation. So we have a whole kind of a battle plan, almost like we do throughout the year, because we have a number of students that miss 20, 30, 50, some students miss over 100 days a year. I expect some of that's going to be compounded with the virtual learning, but our efforts to pursue those children and get them in school will be all the more important. I don't know if I'm calling on people, Mrs. Williams, or if you are, I see.
I can't see any hands.
I see Kevin's hand. Well, I did see Kevin's hand. I see Mr. Ridner's hand, maybe?
All right, if they can just begin to speak, that would be great.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So my question was on students who are on free and reduced meals. How will they access their meals? And what timeline would they have? How will they access their meals and what timeline would they have to go to a meal station?
Again, one of our couple of challenges with that, I mean, that's our biggest challenge when we look at not being in session with all children at their school sites. We anticipate our meal service, we'll obviously provide meals to everybody we can provide meals to. One of my, after this announcement, was going to be to encourage people to come out to our 19 meal sites where we continue to feed students on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We are providing five meals for the week. All students, any student, you don't have to be a student, anyone 18 years and younger of age can come to those sites and receive those meals. We are hoping, I was on with Congressman Trone, and he's on a subcommittee there at the federal level, you know, encouraging him to allow what's happening here in the summer to continue into the fall where anybody could receive meals free of charge. So we continue to provide those meals, but it will be a challenge. Our meal count will be way down. And there's just not an easy answer to that. But we will provide 19 sites and/or more if we can find sites that students will come to pick meals up at.
And Dr. Michael, if I can add on to that, this is Mr. Prue. I think the operations team has worked with the curriculum side in terms of scheduling to make sure that there's a consistent block in the middle of the day across all three schedules. So again, if you have a household with multiple children, multiple age levels, an older child can perhaps assist a younger child in getting to a meal site within that timeframe so that we can provide as much consistency as possible. And again, the food service department is actively engaging in the community to grow from our 19 sites to be able to offer meals as close as we can to the students where they are.
Yeah, because many students, their parents might be at a job. So they would probably have to walk to go get meals or other circumstances.
I would add too, that Mr. Remblee shared with me a concept today that he found from another department somewhere else in the country where they're actually able to do more bulk service. So again, if a family can't leave on a regular basis to go to a meal site, we may be able to prepare and give them the food they need for multiple meals. So it might not even be half pints of milk. It might be gallons of milk that we provide them so that they have it for the week. If they have the means to be able to cook those meals during the day, but they can't get to the meal site, excuse me, we could provide product to them refrigerated and frozen that they can then reheat. So there are options that we are actively engaging to make sure that we can get the services to students where they are.
Thank you.
Mr. Ridner, do you still have a question?
Well, it's more of a comment than a question. You know, I've said this before, and, you know, I supported the virtual learning situation because I felt it was in the best interest of kids and parents and teachers and staff. I still think we, the notion of bringing all teachers into a classroom is unnecessary and short-sighted. It takes away any flexibility that some of our teachers have, would like to have, and possibly desperately need. You know, I've heard a couple of times that we're not going to waste a year. I don't think we wasted those three months. You know, I think there was a lot of learning that did occur. It may not have been up to the standard that we would want at all times, but there are a lot of people doing a lot of work in a short amount of time and trying to take on something like what happened to us. You know, it was a bomb dropped on all of our people. But they've had now, you know, three, four, five months to get better and better at what they do online. So, I mean, with all due respect, people learn from online presentations, online communication. It's not necessarily, it doesn't matter where you're making those presentations. It matters what the content is. So I still believe that we should provide more flexibility to our teachers. And even our staff over in the central put online and not put yourself in, do it virtually. Yeah, and not put yourself in jeopardy as far as your health is concerned. That should be done. I'm sure there are some departments, even at the central office, where our staff could do things virtually, you know, without diminishing what their job is. So that's my position, you know. And, you know, Hogan even said, if you can do it virtually, you should be doing it that way. So, so that's it. Thank you anyhow. Thank you for your listeners.
Mr. Stauffer, do you have a question?
Yes, let me unmute here. Yes. Sometimes my computer works a little slow to unmute. I don't want this question to sound wrong, but I think perhaps the public listening needs, would like an answer to this. When I was on that call with Mabe yesterday, there were 18 on the call. And of those 18, only Somerset County and Washington County were having teachers return to their buildings to do the teaching. Every one of the 18 was online, so, or was on virtual. So, and teaching from home, I assume, because no other county indicated that. So what is the necessity? Or how would you explain the necessity clearly that teachers must teach from their buildings?
Well, I think, Mr. Stauffer, I mean, I'm trying to be very respectful of our staff. The majority of them that have great concern with teaching from school have childcare issues. And I'm very challenged by understanding how they possibly be able to do their full-time job and take care of two, three children at once, but that's just one concept. I know what I've seen in productivity, I've seen some reports where people are believing that they all work better from home. I think there are jobs that work very well from home. I think there's jobs that don't. I think us being in our classrooms and symbolizing that we're here in the classroom and you, the students, are here in the classroom, I think can be important to what we're trying to accomplish. I know that working together would be very different. It's not, you know, meet on Zoom when we can. You know, why can't we just contact each other, see each other at a distance in the hallway, meet in the cafeteria as a team of six or seven at 20 feet apart? You wouldn't have to be six feet apart and work on things and things together. I think it helps get our staff ready for when students are ready to return, especially if they return in small groups, which is how I would anticipate unless the board desires to wait on a vaccine. Like at that point, I think we could be at risk of being out for six months, a year, and possibly into next year. I have no idea. I don't think anybody honestly has an idea because, you know, everybody's sharing thoughts and opinions that we just don't know what's going to work at this point. I think if staff can work from home and all work from home, the board will have two decisions. At what point will the staff come back? And then at what point will it be that students can come back? So it's my belief, I'm responsible for the learning of the children, and I'm convinced of that. That's the direction that I'd like to see us go. I certainly would respect if the board wants to make another decision. It's quite obvious some of you have some other opinions. I'm sure you'll be getting a lot of emails between now and the 18th. I will respect your decision. I'm just trying to do the very best I can for every one of our children. I'm very, very concerned for what's been, I hate to call them a vulnerable population and then put people into those types of categories. But from what I witnessed in the spring, and I agree with Mr. Ridner, our staff worked extremely hard. But I witnessed too many classrooms with two and three children in it, maybe through no fault of the teacher at all. I witnessed a lot of classes that I signed on where students and teachers would be, and they weren't there for whatever reason. We had people convinced that the paper packets were the equivalent of learning. They were a continuity of learning. They were not the equivalent of teaching. I hope that you can see from the presentation tonight, a lot of work has gone into planning a very, very successful year. But it will take all hands on deck. It will take 100% of our attention. No one can get more than 100% of their attention. And no one can split their attention multiple ways and give 100% of their attention. And we will try to create some flexibility. We may hire some people part-time for the nighttime evening work. We may create some cohorts of students in the evening. But you can't half-teacher students in the morning and half-teach them at night unless all students are available that way. I've seen proposals to teach from 5:00 to 7:00. I mean, I don't think we're going to have families available from 5:00 to 7:00 for learning. And my job is to make it the very best I can for students, and that's what I intend to do. And I respect the board. If they make a different decision, I'll just be, we'll just both be in disagreement on it, but that will not stop me from pursuing whatever I need to do to do the very best I can for students as long as I'm with Washington County Public Schools.
Well, you know, that was, that question was asked respectfully and because I think it had to be heard, why you made that decision and so forth. And I respect the idea that being a board member, that I and my other colleagues voted for the what? Were we going to do? We were going for virtual learning. And when you become a new board member, you learn the idea that it's up to the superintendent. Once the board decides what needs to be done, it's up to the superintendent to decide how it's going to be done and so forth. I just, and I think all my board, my fellow board members, and if I don't speak for you, please, fellow board members, tell me so. But I think we're all worried about the fact that we want kids to be reached. And we, and I agree with you, this has to be better than what was done in the spring. And I do believe our staff worked very well and worked very hard. I've had communication with some of them who said they, you know, they'd answer emails late in the evening and so forth and all that. We just want it to be done right, and we want it, the kids to learn and so forth. These are tough decisions, and I hope the public will understand that none of these decisions, you know, nobody sitting on this board wants to be in this position that we're in with COVID-19. I don't think there's a person in the world that wouldn't want to go back and go back to school like we did in September of 2019. You know, rather than having to do all these things. So I appreciate you answering that, and I'll give the floor to someone else. Thank you.
This is Mr. Bickford. I have a question. So where I'm trying to get my head around is, because I do support the idea of slowly reopening. We do know that there are children and students who are going to do just fine virtually. And then we know there will be children and students who will really need to be in a school setting at first. So I like the idea in your plan of gradually adding small groups, especially of vulnerable populations, perhaps even expanding that to tech. What, you followed our guidance at the last meeting. And I know that we should probably set some goalposts for what needs to happen as we reopen schools. So I, you know, one, I'd love to be able to hear some, from some of the health authorities that you speak with every day. I don't know if there's a way to make them available to the board for questions. But also, what sort of guidance would you need from the board, Dr. Michael, to allow these small groups to come back?
Mr. Bickford, I guess it'd be, it's hard for me to say. I mean, the board made the decision that no students will be returning on August 31st, and obviously we respect that. I don't know whether I would have had students, you know, on August 31st. I think things change from week to week. I think there, you know, as we wear masks, don't wear masks, you know, we're wearing masks consistently now. Where we had areas that, you know, as long as you were 10 or 12 feet apart, you weren't wearing masks. All those areas now, we're all wearing masks. It was at North High's auditorium, there were 48 or nine of us in the whole auditorium scattered out across the auditorium, probably 10 or 15 feet apart. And all of us were wearing masks the entire five hours or so that I was there, the six or seven hours that the other administrators were there after I came back to this meeting. So I think, you know, we do that across Maryland. If they do that in Pennsylvania, or in West Virginia, might we see this thing flatten back out? Might they have some other guidance? I mean, probably Jeff Prue, I think, talks to the Health Department almost every day. That's part of that group of seven that he's talking about or subgroup of that group that he talks regularly with the Health Department to try to get guidance of what's happening. We keep up with the emergency service task force group that keeps us posted on information. I think we just have to follow what happens with the virus. I mean, it's interesting, child cares have been opened this whole time. I know it reduced numbers and only 15 in a room or whatever, but I've yet to hear of a childcare center that has had to completely close up, particularly for the younger children. So I don't know. We just continue to follow those types of things. I think if we're looking, again, you know, I hear hopes of the vaccine within a couple of months. I know the one trial has 30, 40, 50,000 people involved in a trial. But I'd be a little bit nervous about a medicine that's rushed in six months. If they do come out with one that they believe is effective, will be 100% effective. Will 100% of our students and teachers get the vaccine? Will we let students or teachers return that don't get the vaccine? I mean, all those things are just very, you know, kind of up in the air. So I think it's going to be a little bit of wait and see. I'm confident that we can have staff return safely. And I think it'd be unrealistic for me to say that I can absolutely guarantee that no one will get COVID here at school. I think I can say we're safe, we're safer than anyplace else. And there is a chance if someone could come in with COVID-19, but we would, again, I've been saying stay further than six feet apart. And some of the questions you ask for quarantine circumstances, they do ask, have you been within six feet of anybody for 10 to 15 minutes that's been identified with COVID-19? We'd want the answer to that question to be, you know, with all honesty, we want it to be no. But we want to be able to gather groups of people, much like we did in the auditorium today at North. And I feel very confident people were very safe there today. So I'm struggling, Mr. Bickford, to coming up with a good answer. I mean, it depends on what the definition of safe is. There is no harm or risk from COVID-19. I would say that's probably years away. There's less risk, I hope, is either identify a cure or a vaccine. I guess we'd change that. I think if it doesn't morph, and we continue to see, particularly with young-aged children, that there's limited risk. I think there's just, you know, at what point do we, at what point do we decide we move forward? I think we're obviously going to see quite a few districts, at least for the moment, are returning within a week or two. We certainly can follow and see what their process has been, what their success has been. Again, to believe that people are not going to get this, they are going to get COVID-19, much like we received the flu and other things. So what I want to make sure is that we're not the spreader of that and that we put everything in place for staff initially and for small groups of students initially. As they return, as groups get larger, that we have it down to a science how we have, you know, really mitigated the risk of contracting COVID-19 here at Washington County Public Schools. So Jeff, I don't know if you would have anything you want to add to that, but I, Mr. Bickford, I don't know the answer to your question. I would probably punt back to you and say, what is the answer to that question? You know, it's a very difficult question.
And Dr. Michael, I could share, you know, we do have regular discussions. Specifically, you know, I talked on the phone and had email conversation today with Dr. Gavaria, who is the deputy director of the county Health Department. I've spoken twice this week with Elaine Rose, who is really on the vaccination front and sort of on the recovery plans. And Mr. Stoner, the county's health officer, served on the Athletics Recovery Task Force. He is one of our coaches. So, you know, they've been actively involved in all of our plans. But we could engage, if there were specific questions that the board might want to see answers to or to have some conversation on in terms of maybe setting a goalpost of when we think we could start engaging in small groups and what that might look like. Now that our plan's unveiled, how does that fit together? We could actively engage the Health Department in that discussion.
This is Mr. Bickford. I guess I turn to our president to ask, because I don't know what's appropriate, but it sounds like there might be need for a dedicated work session where perhaps we invite members from the Health Department that are on this COVID team. And I'd just like to get your thoughts, maybe my fellow board members' thoughts about how as a board, we come up with these goalposts.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Yes, I agree. I think there's the need for a work session. I think there's the need to seek guidance from the, those in the health service, those there at the Health Department who have the information that's there at the Health Department who have the information that we don't have and the expertise that we don't have. So we can certainly find a time to hold such a work session to have those discussions. I think just about everyone has had an opportunity to say something. I'd like to take a turn, if I may. First of all, I want to acknowledge that, yes, this is indeed the superintendent's decision to make. There are decisions that the board makes and there are decisions that the superintendent makes. And I have some concerns and my concerns center around unintended consequences of the decision to have teachers teach from their classroom. I, I know that the success of this plan is going to depend on having excellent staff providing excellent instruction. And I know that the success of this plan depends on clear expectations being communicated. And a big piece of this plan depends on accountability. So while this is the superintendent's decision to make, it's the job of the board to monitor closely how this is all playing out. And right now, when I, when I mentioned unintended consequences, the things that come to mind right now are resignations of teachers who have resigned because of circumstances surrounding the decision that teachers would have to teach from their classroom, retirements that happened sooner than people had planned, people who are on family and medic, or who plan to apply to go on family medical leave. Dr. Pugh cited a number of people who were in the process. I'm interested in knowing how many have applied, how many plan to apply and how many have been denied. And how many do we expect from our teaching force? How many of those people do we expect to lose? And I don't think I'm wrong in thinking that those people that we're not going to have working with us and delivering virtual instruction are some of our very best, and that's a concern to me. Can we bear those numbers? So I, I would appreciate if, if the superintendent and staff could provide us with the kind of data that we will need to be able to monitor those kinds of things and, yeah, that's where I am.
Okay, are there any other questions regarding the plan? I have one more item for superintendent's comments tonight.
Colleagues, anyone else that wishes to speak to make comment? Okay, Dr. Michael, I think you can move ahead with your other two items.
Okay. Well, the one item was the food service item about the 19 meal sites, just encouraging people to continue to participate. Our meal participation, we thought would really be up this summer and it's kind of gone up and down a little bit. It's been a little bit off. I think each time, you know, stimulus money shows up and some things like that, we've actually seen almost completely coinciding with that, a decrease in our meal count and, you know, certainly people welcome to, you know, certainly switch off of our meal presentations. We do the very best we can. Our staff works extremely hard, but just, it was just an encouragement to continue to seek out these meal sites, check the website. If you can get assistance from us, please don't hesitate to contact your principal. Many of them attend, go to the wheel, meal sites throughout the summer and encourage their students and help them get ready for the new school year. So that was one of the items. The other item, I'm going to ask Mr. Prue just to brief his chair. On top of everything else, we, we need to be mindful of some budget challenges that we're presented with at this point. And I've just asked him to share just a couple of slides to try to illustrate a couple of the things that we're watching carefully. So Mr. Prue, I don't know if you're ready for those slides, but if you could kind of take over for a minute. And Mrs. Williams, when Mr. Prue is finished, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. And Mr. Moser, I think we'll move to the next slide. As we've talked about some of the budget challenges, we've really talked about items related to the current fiscal year and then the subsequent fiscal year, thinking ahead to FY22. I wanted to share with the board that, that one of the concerns we have relating to FY21 is that the state has been hesitant to assure school districts that the state aid is firm and set for the year. And there's been some indication that we could expect to see a state, a reduction in state aid potentially back to the FY2020 levels. And if we, we look at the change in our total state aid package from FY20 to FY21, we potentially could be looking at a, a loss of $3.14 million in revenue. That's the, that's the amount of state revenue we received for FY21. So we want to bring that forward to the board's attention as an item that staff is watching. We're, we're in regular communication, Mr. Brandenburg, and specifically on meetings with the county chief financial officers, with state staff, monitors that regularly, regularly, I believe Mabe is watching that as well. And what we're sort of looking, the trigger will be whether there's a BRFa, so the Budget Reconciliation and Financing Act. This is a, a piece of legislation that is authored by the governor and it basically is him saying that these are obligations of the state through legislation that we cannot fund. And that BRFa has to be signed and approved by the General Assembly in, in a, in an open session. So one of the possibilities is the return of the General Assembly here in the fall for a short session to deal with any number of issues that may be coming up, whether it's COVID-19, whether it's the BRFa, if the governor chooses to author it at this time, or potentially to handle any overrides of governors vetoes from the previous session that, that ended early, of course, this year. So, so that is FY21. If we move to the next slide, the other concern we've talked about is within the food nutrition services budget funding. As we presented the budget, it seems like only, you know, just last week, but I think it was four to six weeks ago, we talked about, you know, how difficult it was to prepare the food nutrition service budget, not knowing what we were embarking on and where we are today. So some of the concerns really stem from having reduced revenues from limited meal sales, as Dr. Michael just alluded to. We based some estimates on what our meals, daily meal participation rates looked like in the month of April and projected them for the year, assumed that we would control all of the variable expenses that we had control over, assumed that we would pay staff for a complete year, and we have the potential loss of $5.6 million within this food service fund, which exceeds their fund balance and is probably a place that the board may want to consider supporting the food nutrition services department. With that said, the department is actively engaging community partners to increase meal participation. They're, they're looking at how we can offer as many sites as we feasibly can and deliver in various delivery models into community areas to get meals as close to students as we can, as we discussed, as we talked about the reopening plan. What is currently pending in, in Washington are federal waivers that can be offered by the United States Department of Agriculture and a new bill that was proposed last week by a representative from Virginia, who actually chairs the House Labor Education and Workforce Committee, of which Congressman Trone sits on. So Dr. Michael mentioned that conversation he had with Congressman Trone the end of last week. The congressman indicated that he felt like that was a bill that could pass. I would also offer that there's a possibility that the bill was authored with the possibility that it could roll up into the current stimulus bill that's being discussed in both houses in Washington as a way to support families during the COVID-19 pandemic. The new bill would offer universal free meals for all students at any site they attend to during the, the course of the pandemic and, and during this, this current state of emergency. So I, I think at this point, it's at least through June 30 of 2021, and that would be a huge support to our program. At current, under, without the waivers or without the federal legislation, the food service department will be asking families to support the meal program through their normal school year meal status on free, reduced or paid status. So some of our families will be asked to pay the normal school year price for their meals if they go to a school to pick them up. And I think that will be detrimental to our meal participation. Moving ahead to the next slide, which is starting to think a little bit about, about fiscal year 22. You know, we, we talk about our money number every year when we discuss the budget and the money number is the enrollment as reflected on September 30th of, of the year prior. So looking ahead to here, September 30th of 2020, that's the enrollment number that will project our revenue for FY22, for both state aid and for local maintenance of effort. And just to throw a number to the board, as we, as I think we mentioned during the reopening and maybe Dr. Michael mentioned, you know, we're seeing families that are leaving the district for, for private school that may be open here in the fall. We're, I think we're seeing families that may be engaging in, let's say, a cyber charter type program that maybe is a little bit more established than our cyber program is. And then potentially students that we, we can't reach or unable to reach, that disappear from our roles from last year to this year. So a 1% reduction in students is approximately 218 students. And what that means is, in terms of local maintenance of effort, the county government would only be required to fund the Board of Education at the reduced enrollment from September 30th. So a, a reduction of 218 students could mean a reduction of 1.03 million in FY21 levels. That does not account for any of the stipulations that may go along with maintenance of effort or anything that may happen with current legislation. That's just specifically the, the dollars per student that we received in FY21 times the, the, the reduced enrollment rate. On the state aid, while the number is slightly higher, the percentage difference is a little bit less because our enrollment is supported and propped up by a declining enrollment grant that the state has in the COMAR regulation. So when, when school districts have a declining enrollment, the, the three-year average is used as opposed to a year when you have an increased enrollment where you actually get the increase. So our drop is actually supported by the three-year declining enrollment. So we would look at a reduction of $1.09 million at the state level. And as you know, our state funding amounts to slightly more than 60% of our budget. So in total, excuse me, in total, about a $2 million loss in revenue as we look forward to 2022. Of course, any significant decreases in enrollment beyond the 1% have substantial impacts. And we just wanted to make you aware of that information as we embark upon the school year. And, and Mrs. Williams, I'm happy to answer any questions the board members may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Colleagues, do you have any questions for Mr. Prue?
This is Mr. Beckford. I have a question. Jeff, when you, when you said that you, the board may consider helping out the Food and Nutrition Services Fund, what did you have in mind? Was that something, was that also tied into the fact that, that students have, some students would have to pay for the, their meals at these sites?
Well, I think, you know, the consideration for the board would be, you know, the, the food service fund is an enterprise fund and acts upon its own. It currently has a fund balance of about $2 million. The federal government allows a fund balance within the Food and Nutrition Services Fund not to exceed a three-month operating supply. So for our food service fund, that would be about $4 million. So a reduction in, or a loss in FY21 that would equate to five, you know, in, let's say in excess of $5 million, would deplete that fund balance and put them in a negative fund balance situation. At that point, potentially, the board would be supporting at least on a cash flow basis the food service fund while the books are still kept separately. What I would offer to the board as a possible solution would be that if the board had other savings in other areas and categories within the general fund budget, they could choose to absolve any losses or at least put the food service fund at, let's say, a zero fund balance situation. Because honestly, to, to recoup any kind of a loss of that nature is, would take years for the food service fund to, to pick up. Just as a, as a point of reference, a 10 cent meal price increase with offering reduced status at nearly 50% of students on free and reduced meals, a 10 cent meal price increase really generates very little revenue. It generates about $50,000 a year in additional revenue. So it would be nearly impossible for the food service fund to recoup that kind of a loss. So I think that's an area where we may have to be a little ingenious in terms of how we support that program and keep it viable for the long term.
Okay, that, that makes sense. So basically, we need to be mindful of it and be prepared to, to help out with cash flow.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Michael, did I lose count? Was that your first or second? You said you had two items.
That, that was my second item.
Okay, thank you. And that was, and you have no update? That's all?
Yeah, all finished, all done.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to personnel action. And we have Dr. Pugh. Dr. Pugh?
It does help to turn off the mic. At this time, I'm asking for your approval of the personnel changes discussed earlier in today's closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
This is Mr. Beckford. I say move.
Thank you, Mr. Beckford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Do we have any questions before we move to the vote? Is someone able to call the roll for the vote? Dr. Pugh, do you mind doing that? Are you able to do that?
I can, that's fine. Mr. Beckford?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Ridenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Staffer?
Aye.
And Mrs. Williams?
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. That's six affirmative votes, so the personnel action has been approved. Thank you. Next, we have reports to the board. Do we have any committee chairs who would like to make a report or an announcement this evening?
Madam President, this is Mrs. Fisher. I would like to make a report.
Please do.
A policy committee is tentatively meeting on August the 25th. I have not heard from Mr. Staffer yet, but I believe everybody else is available. The time for the meeting has not been set yet, and at this point, we also do not know if it would be in person or online through Zoom or whatever. That is to be determined. Topics, however, include altering three policies. Two will need to be altered for some new federal rules, excuse me, and one because of some staffing changes. We also, if you remember back to our last meeting, we also are to begin reviewing the first eight policies under Section J, which is entitled Students for Equity Considerations, which means we would need to review those eight policies before the meeting. So after I hear from Mr. Staffer, I will confirm and find answers to my unanswered questions here and we will set up a meeting hopefully on the 25th.
This is Mr. Staffer. I must have missed the communication. What time are you meeting on the 25th? I'm good.
Well, we hadn't said a time, although I have invited Mrs. Smith because of the work on equity of policies, and she is only available in the morning. I believe that's what she said. I'll get back to you tomorrow. How's that?
Because I have finance at nine.
Okay, I'll get back to you tomorrow about it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Beckford.
Thank you. The finance committee met on July 28th, had a very good meeting. We had a review of all of the grants that, as you know, we, we get many, many grants that help fund our school system, and we got updates on many of them, including some of the ones affected by, by COVID that have been given extensions to spend the money. We also got a status update on our audit and we discussed the proposed budget calendar for this coming year, and that'll be presented to the board soon. And we reviewed And we reviewed a prescription plan for retirees as well as got sort of a dismal update on investment activities. The board is not able to make any significant investments, but we are able to park our money into some government bonds. And you'd be amazed at some of the levels that government bonds are paying right now. Some of them don't even, even make 1%, which is, which is incredible, or even less. So anyway, we are going to be meeting again on the last Tuesday of the month at, at 9:00 AM.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any other chair?
Mrs. Williams, this is Mrs. Murray. Curriculum and Instruction met on July 21st to discuss global community citizenship and how we might implement all or parts of the program into our curriculum. And Dr. Willow is going to look into that for us. And we are going to meet again on September 22nd at 4:00 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there anyone else?
Yes, this is Mr. Staffer. All the board members, all the materials from the Mave Legislative Meeting. Too many things to try to cover in a report. You're welcome to read them and then ask any questions. The only thing, a comment I would make, it was brought out concerning what Mr. Prue said, that all counties, all counties in Maryland, because they're going, or at least the counties I know of that are going virtual, that were on the meeting yesterday, are worried about declining enrollments because of virtual instruction and maintenance of effort budgets. So we're, we're right there with everybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. I think that's probably it. Next on the agenda is miscellaneous business, consideration of future agenda items. You should have a list that was provided in your packet regarding future agenda items. I'm not going to read all of these. There are 10 listed. They go through November 17th. If you have any concerns about any of those, please let me know. And if you have any suggestions for an agenda item, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. At this time, we'll move to board member comments. Mr. Bakum, would you like to begin this evening with comments?
I have nothing at this moment.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I don't really have any specific comments. I'm just feeling really challenged right now. We've had a lot of kind of bad news. But it'll be an interesting year.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Ridenhour?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bickford?
I'd like to pay tribute to, to people that were on the Personnel Actions list that announced their retirement. And they both happened to be members of Mr. Ridenhour's family. His wife, Tudy, is retiring. And talk about a legacy. She taught Latin for, I believe, over 40 years. I think she was a Latin teacher the entire time. And I don't know if that is the end of the Latin curriculum in Washington County or not, but I know she, she was beloved, is beloved by many of her students. And, and also his sister, Ruth Ridenhour, who, her most recent position was the head of the Theater Department at Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Previously to that, she was at Williamsport High School and was a previous Teacher of the Year. And I think she, I think her number of years in service was 44 years. And I'm sure many people have been impacted, besides students, but countless numbers of people who have attended the fantastic productions that she's put on throughout the years. I have many fond memories of attending those productions at Williamsport High School and then at Barbara Ingram. So I'd like to salute both of them, as well as all the other people who've announced their retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mrs. Murray?
I have nothing tonight, Mrs. Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Staffer?
I just want to commend Mr. Bakum. He and I were invited by the Hagerstown Lions Club to their online meeting today. They asked me to give a little bit of the history behind the student rep position. And then Mr. Bakum, Kevin, informed the club about his goals and why he wanted to do the position and this type of thing. He did a very good job. Thank you, Kevin, for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Staffer. I have no comments, but I do have a reminder. I'd like to remind my fellow board members of the retreat that we have coming up on this Saturday, August 8th. This will be our second equity training with Supervisor Allison Smith as our trainer. So I hope to see you all on Saturday. Dr. Michael, did you have anything that you wanted to share before we adjourn?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything that they would like to share before we adjourn? Then we stand adjourned. Thank you.